Good afternoon. I would like to call to order the May 31st regular meeting of the DeKalb Board of Registration and Elections. Can we have someone call the roll, please?
Good afternoon, board members. When I call your name, please respond by saying here. Vice Chair Nancy Jester. Here. Board Member Anthony Lewis.
Here.
Chairperson Delee Lomond Smith.
Here.
Board Member Susan Mader.
Here.
And Board Member Carly Swett. Here. Thank you. Madam Chair, we have a call.
Thank you. May I get a motion to approve the agenda?
Hi, can I make a motion to add an item to the agenda?
Yep, after we get it, we can get a motion to approve in a second, and then we can discuss any changes.
Okay, motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? And I'll give Ms. Swift the floor.
Yes, I'd like to add an agenda item. And Chair, you can decide where we put it, but discussion of the certification of results to be held at 4:30 related to any concerns or issues that we, the board has.
Is there consensus or other thoughts from the rest of the board on adding the item as requested by Ms. Swift?
I certainly support.
Okay, any other thoughts or additions or changes from the board? So we've got the request to discuss the certification. And why don't we put that after item four, before executive session, if that's okay? Because that'll give us the opportunity to get the advanced voting conversation out of the way, hear public comment, and then go from there. Okay, great. So we've got a motion and a second to approve the agenda with the change as noted. Are we ready for the vote? All in favor of approving the agenda as amended, please signify by saying aye and raising your right hand.
Aye.
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 All opposed, please say no. And that passes unanimously. Thank you. Can we get a motion to approve? Is there a reason to separate the minutes? I'm just looking at head nods or anything. A motion to approve both the minutes for the April 14th, 2022 regular meeting and the April 22nd special call meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? I just wanted to note the board comments in the April 22nd special call meeting minutes. I just have a slight issue with the characterization of my comments. I know it's summary remarks, but I just didn't feel like that summary fully characterized or accurately characterized my remarks about the challenge. So if we could just make a note of that, we don't have to belabor that here, but I just wanted to make a note of that for approval. Are we ready for the vote? All in favor of adopting the minutes with the requested amendment as noted, please signify by saying aye and raising your right hand.
Aye.
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 All opposed, please say no. And that passes unanimously. Thank you. Can we get the, get set up for public comment, please?
Good afternoon.
Because I am in the airport.
Good afternoon. Public comment of two minutes or less may be made live via teleconference. For those joining the meet by telephone, please be aware that your phone number may be displayed to the public viewing or participating in the online meeting. Citizens who attend the meeting via Zoom link may join the public comment queue by raising their hand in the Zoom application. While citizens who attend the meeting via telephone may join the comment queue by pressing pound followed by the number two. There will be no comment cards, so when you are called upon, please state your name for the record. Also, be conscious of speaking time so that everyone has an opportunity to provide input in the allotted time. Abusive, profane, or derogatory language will not be permitted.
Thank you very much, Ms. Austin. At this time, as a reminder, then, if you would like to provide public comment, pound two or use the raise hand feature. And this is not intended to be engaging with and expecting answers from interactively. However, if you have any comments and/or questions, and the board will then entertain those as they deem appropriate after public comment is over. So with that, our first in queue is Janine, and I apologize if I mispronounce any names, but Janine Mylum. I will ask them to unmute. If they would like to start their video, they may. And please state your name and address for the record.
I'm Janine Mylum. My address is 1599 Spring Brook Drive, DeKalb, Georgia, and I am the Republican candidate for House District 82. Can you see? Start my video. There you go. My issue actually affects both myself and my general election candidate. There's two big issues. First, in the reporting on y'all's website, there are 10 of my precincts where I just have a total of votes, and it's not, they're not roped out by Election Day, advanced voting, absentee by mail, provisional. They're replaced by, for asterisks. So I've reached out and asked questions, why I can't see the vote totals specifically for those items in 10 of my precincts. The second issue is that the numbers for my totals don't match the totals. My totals are on two spreadsheets, part one and part three. Those combined totals don't match the totals on the parts one and part two totals on your website. And none of those totals matches what's reported on the Secretary of State's site. And that affects both myself and my general election opponent. So I've got questions about why I can't see the breakout of my vote in the precincts and why our totals don't match what's being reported to Secretary of State.
Okay, thank you so much for your comments and questions. And as noted, to the extent that they may be able to be answered, the chair and team will do that if and when appropriate. But again, thank you so much for your comments. Our next request is Michelle Long Spears. I will ask Michelle to unmute. Video already started. And please state your name and address for the record.
Thank you, Mr. Matelski. My name is Michelle Long Spears, 1599 Harts Mill Road Northeast, Brookhaven, Georgia, 30319. Thank you all so much for taking time out of your weekend, Saturday, Sunday, and Monday, a holiday weekend, to work diligently to get to the bottom of this process. As you all know, I'm a candidate for District 2, and I'm looking forward to seeing the results of the election as soon as possible. Thank you, Mr. Matelski.
And thank you so much for your comments. Our next request is from Dan Weisenhut. I will ask him to unmute. If he would like to start his video, he may. And please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Dan Weisenhut. I live at 814 McLendon in Scottdale, Georgia. I'll try not to be profane. I was up really late, so I'm running on a little bit of coffee, so bear with me. I just wanted to tell the board, I'm a little shocked that we don't have even a preliminary tally of the votes after everything we went through yesterday. Part of my job as publisher of DeKalbish is encouraging civic engagement among our readership, encouraging them to vote, telling them that the votes that they cast matter in every election. And the longer this drags on, the harder it becomes to get answers as to what has happened, the more difficult it becomes for me to spread that message of civic engagement and telling people that their vote matters. Things I saw over the past couple of days have been a real eye-opener. Seeing this at the ground level has really given me pause about the way that we handle elections in DeKalb County. We were given conflicting advice as to what we could or could not take pictures of. There were shifting legal arguments for doing that. The AJC, God bless them, got their attorneys involved with it well, as well. We were not allowed to take pictures of the ballots. It's my understanding that that is illegal. And the people who made that decision know that that's illegal. And either they came up with a different legal rationale for it, or they just didn't care. But if people had been allowed to take pictures of the ballots, chances are, we could have had some idea as of yesterday what the results would have actually been. So I just want to just point out that this lack of transparency, this inability to answer basic questions about what has happened here, to explain what the technical problems were, is eroding confidence in elections in DeKalb County. And that is going to be a problem for future elections. And I want every board member to know that that concerns me greatly. Thank you.
And thank you very much for your comments, sir. Our next request is from Rahul Bali. I will ask Rahul to unmute if he'd like to start his video. Well, it's started already. And please state your name and address for the record.
It's Rahul Bali, WABE Radio, 740 Bismarck Avenue, Bismarck Road in Atlanta, 30324. More of a follow-up to what Dan said. For my audience that's just now tuning in, I would appreciate if whether the chair or members of the board could address specifically what the glitch was during, specifically what the glitch was that led to this recount and where you stand now. And how do you address concerns from DeKalb voters, whether they live in the second district or not, about this election and future elections, then for DeKalb voters in general for the June runoffs and then the elections that are coming up in November?
Thank you so much for your comments and question. Our next request is from Marilyn Marks. I will ask Marilyn to unmute. If she'd like to start video, she may. And please state your name and address for the record.
Thank you. This is Marilyn Marks. I'm trying to get the right video on here. Just if you can bear with me for just a second. Oh, I can't do that. I apologize for speaking to you from behind, from behind a weird screen here. But thank you for the chance. My name is Marilyn Marks. I'm the Executive Director for Coalition of Good Governance. I'm speaking today on behalf of our members who are DeKalb County voters. Our concern regarding the manner of conducting the May 24th election is too long to present in this short period. But you've heard my concerns that I expressed over the last four days I spent observing the process. You should all have an email today that I sent on behalf of our DeKalb voters asking that you delay the certification of the district-county commissioner race until such time as the official, the unofficial results have been published at least 48 hours, giving the voters, the candidates, and political parties an opportunity to review the details so that they may object to any errors or discrepancies prior to certification. As you are all aware, the moment that the election is certified, voters and candidates alike are put in the position of having to commit to spend six figures in legal fees to file effective challenges. However, that kind of legal complication can be avoided by this board by simply obtaining from a court order, more time to make it remotely fair to voters and candidates permitting them and the board itself to review the numbers before they're finalized. It's simply a basic democratic process. No voter could have confidence in the District 2 results if they've been paying attention. The processes have not earned voter confidence. Now's the time for a sharp turnaround in your policies to begin to earn the voter confidence you claim to desire. The manual count process was conducted with no transparency, no written rules, and no statutory authority, and cannot withstand scrutiny. I urge you not to force the voters and the campaigns into protracted and expensive legal battles to challenge the process you've undertaken to conceal from the public the unconventional and unsupported method of counting votes. I will end my comments here for this forum, but will be following up with later written communications expressing our objections and disappointment. I urge you to adopt a more democratic, transparent method of operating from here forward, including the scheduled executive sessions that you have now on the agenda. I urge you to make a sharp turn and be extremely conservative in assuring that your closed-door sessions fully comply with Georgia's Sunshine laws in both letter and spirit. Thank you.
And thank you so much for your comments. Let's give one last call. I'm not seeing any additional hands raised, but if you would like to make a comment, pound two or use the raise hand feature. We do have another request, Marshall Orson. I will ask Marshall to unmute. If he'd like to start his video, he may. And please state your name and address for the record. Oops, you're still muted, sir. Sending you an unmuted request. There you go.
I'm Marshall Orson, 970 Springdale Road, Atlanta, Georgia, 30306. I am a candidate in the District 2 race. You know, I am raising a question not only about the process and the problems that have arisen during this process, but I am even skeptical as to whether we can rely on the printed ballots that were produced by the machines if the inputs into those machines were wrong to begin with. I know we have, we make an assumption that people review their paper ballots and can catch any errors, but I think in real human behavior, that does not really occur. I think people look at their screen and then take the paper and put it into a machine. And I think at the end of the day, we want to ensure that there is confidence in the results. And if the inputs into this process were questionable or wrong, then relying on the final result of the paper ballots that were produced by the machines might also be questionable. And so I think there is a deeply flawed process at many levels, and this isn't, none of this is going to inspire confidence by voters. Thank you.
And thank you so much for your comments. At this time, Madam Chair, that does exhaust all the requests for public comment.
Thank you, Ms. Matelski, and thank you for all of the members of the public who spoke. Let's move to item number four to discuss advanced voting times and locations for the June 21st runoff. And I'll give the floor to Ms. Smith.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and good afternoon, board. I have just, I apologize for not sending in advance the map, but we will, after we receive approval, send that out and post it. But what we're asking for today is for your consideration of advanced voting sites and dates and times. And so we will present to you Dunwoody, North DeKalb Senior Center, Tucker Library, Briarwood, Bessie Brenham, South DeKalb Mall, Stonecrest Library, Memorial Drive, and Berean as locations.
Madam Chair, I have a question. I don't want to be out of order.
We didn't hear you that time. There you go.
Sorry, there's a little delay in this. It makes an announcement to me every time I take myself off of you. So Ms. Mader, you have the floor to ask your question.
Thank you. Ms. Smith, are these the same early vote locations as for the the election that we just conducted? Or is it the same exact list, or have some fallen off the list? Maybe that's a better way to make sure the public understands which ones are still on the list, so to speak.
So some have fallen off the list, and we have an addition or replacement for one, which Stonecrest Library, we're replacing that site if you all are interested in having advanced location in that area that will replace the Browns Mill site. New Birth, we will not be utilizing that facility during advanced voting for the primary. The numbers were low for that site, and so we feel like we can capture those folks that went to that location with other sites with, you know, promotion of the other sites. Ellenwood Library was the same. They also were one of the lower traffic areas for advanced voting during that, those weeks. So we will not be utilizing that location. And I believe those are the only changes.
So how many do we have before and how many now?
Including Memorial's two sites, there were 13 sites. And we have 10?
10. Okay, thank you. Thank you so much.
Ms. Smith, you want to talk about dates and time now?
Yes, okay. And what we are proposing for dates and times, we would like to begin on Saturday, June 11th. And run through that following Friday, June 17th. Saturday hours, we're proposing nine to six, 9:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Sunday, 12:00 to 5:00, and then Monday through Friday, 7:00 to 7:00.
Mr. Lewis, you're recognized.
Thank you. Actually, this is out of order. So I'm not sure of the parliamentary procedures there, but I'm receiving some messages that we missed some, someone in public comment, and I don't know if we're able to go back to hear that.
I'm not sure how to resolve that at this stage, because I think we did a double check and check-in before we concluded public comment. I will, since this is a little bit out of the norm, I will ask my colleagues for your opinion on this. Are we certain that this person was present during public comment?
From what I can tell, it was one of the phone numbers that doesn't have a name on it. So, and I do remember when I was looking through the participant list early on, that that number was here.
And Madam Chair, I did not see any hands raised at the time, but perhaps they did not do a pound two. So again, it's up to you and the board in terms of the process.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Mr. Lewis, for bringing this to our attention. We can, I'm going to table this until we finish this agenda item, and then I'll check in with the board about allowing this person to speak.
Okay, thank you. Sorry for being out of order, but I wanted to try to get that done before we finish with this.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Did you need to?
Yes, thank you. I omitted inadvertently Emory, which was used as an advanced site for the primary, and we want to use that site again for the runoff.
Okay, great. And does that, are we still having two separate sites at Memorial Drive, or are we just doing one? Okay, all right. So that would put us at 11?
It's a, we said one, but if you are, we can do two if you, if the board wants us to do two. So if we don't, if we only do one site for Memorial, we will be at 10 sites?
What were the numbers like for, do we happen to have that in terms of turnout there?
Memorial site is usually, is always the highest. I don't have the numbers right here, but.
Okay. So if we feel like we can staff it, you know, I'll hear from, from the rest of my colleagues how they feel, but I support it if we, if we can staff that. Any other comments? Yes, Ms. Mader, you're recognized.
I'll just say that I am in support of staffing a second location there at Memorial Drive. If we can staff it, I'm all for it.
Thank you. Ms. Swift, Mr. Lewis, or Vice Chair Jester, any comments on this before we ask, before I ask for a motion?
None.
I'm sorry. I just wanted to add, I don't know if, when we're talking about staffing the locations, I just want to, there to be some consideration for probably staff breaks and whatnot, because they're all day long, every day for the full period of early voting. So if possible, I don't know how our shifts work. Maybe we can work in shifts, or maybe find some way to give people extended breaks that are there all day long, because, you know, the polls may be open from 7:00 to 7:00, but the poll workers are there much longer than that. So I want that to be a consideration.
Thank you. Would anyone like to offer a motion?
I move to approve the early vote locations and times presented by Director Smith as as, I think, I'm sorry, the only, I want to make sure we include the additional site that Board Member Mader recommended. So do I need to add them to the motion, or would that be included in the sites?
I think that that's included.
Okay, so motion to approve the sites and times recommended by Director Smith for the runoff election.
Second. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Are we ready for the vote? All in favor of approving the early voting locations, dates, and times as proposed, please signify by saying aye and raising your right hand.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, please say no. And that passes unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Smith. Okay, so we added a an agenda item for discussion that is not particularly well-defined.
Point of order, Madam Chair.
What, state your point, Ms. Jester.
Did we, before we get to that discussion point, did we want to see what consensus was on Mr. Lewis's pointing out that some, that we had a public comment that we might want to hear?
Thank you for, thank you for that reminder. Board members, what is your pleasure on this? I know it's unusual, but.
It is. I'm not sure if we've done it before. I think we've given some, some leeway before, since we started doing Zoom. To my knowledge, just one person that wants it, that wanted to comment, apparently they used the hand to, the pound two feature. It didn't work. So I feel if they can keep their comments succinct and to the point, that I don't have any issue with going out of order and letting them make their comment.
Is there any objection?
No objection. No objection.
Okay, all right. All right. Okay, so I, I'm on the app on my phone, so I can't see everybody, but
With your, with your permission, Madam Chair, we have two folks on the phone. If you could, the person that would like to speak, if you could try pound two right now, that will get you in the queue. And if not, then I will have to individually unmute. So pound two would identify. All right, with that not working, I will ask the first person with a five, wait, maybe it's working now. There it is. All right. I will ask them to unmute. Please state your name and address for the record. And again, under two minutes, two minutes or under, please.
Hi, thank you very much. This is Gollan Fariro. I'm the co-founder of Voter GA. Coming to you on behalf of many DeKalb County voters and just wanted to briefly talk about an open records request that we had filed for a copy of the ballots before that they are transmitted to the clerk's office. As y'all know, the elections, the elections system is actually not in compliance with federal, with Georgia law, according to United States District Court. It does not produce a verifiable ballot, doesn't produce a verifiable ballot, nor does it produce the actual, excuse me, the actual, had some interruptions. I'm over here at the board, at the election board's office. Doesn't produce the actual accumulate votes from the QR code. And the electors' choices are not verifiable. So as a result of that, we filed an open records request and that request, we can't really rely on the digital ballot images, so we requested the ballots. We found in 2020 that the Fulton images were actually electronically altered before certification. So that's the reason why we're requesting the actual ballots from you. So we, we made, we made the request on election night. And the controlling statutes for ORRs are the fact that the ballots are non-exempt records. They're subject to disclosure prior to certification and transmission to the clerk of the court where they are then sealed. The counties have to comply or cite an exemption in ORR law. The counties are exempted from any liability if they comply in good faith, which is what we're asking you to do. So we're asking you to honor our open records request, which I think you have. You also have a copy of these slides. So we're asking you to please do that before you transmit the ballots to the clerk of the court, because at that time, they then become sealed. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak.
And thank you so much for your comments. And that should, that exhausted. Then back to you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Okay, so to our additional agenda item.
Chairwoman Smith, I just want to make sure, was there only one person or were there two? Because I thought originally they said there was just one. Okay.
It was just one. There were two people on the phone. We just didn't know which one was supposed to speak for public comment.
Ms. Swift, can you restate your current question? I think you were dropped out.
I was saying, Chairwoman Smith, if you want, I can just restate what I was, what I was thinking for this agenda item, since I put it on the, the, I still have it added.
You have the floor.
Okay, thank you so much. So as, as we all know as a board and what we have, that there is, we are currently, we have a meeting this afternoon at 4:30 to certify the election results. Members of the board, like the public, we have not seen the final tabulation yet. So I think we all have some questions for our legal team and for our director that we wanted to maybe get our arms around what's happening prior to, so that we can come up with the best, the best, so we have enough information to make the decision about how to move forward with certification. And so I was thinking that we could all go around and ask any relevant questions. And then after that, if anyone has a proposal for how we could move forward, we could discuss it and then table, obviously, any additional votes related to certification for 4:30. So is that, does that sound like something that would work? Recognizing we only have about 45 minutes left on this call, because, you know, we have another call later this afternoon. I think, Nick, Vice Chair, just
Yeah, if it's okay with the chair not seeing her video, it looks like it's still maybe stuck. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna go ahead and assume that I've got the floor for, if anybody objects to that, let me know. And I can continue to facilitate the meeting if we've lost our chair. I don't see her now. So I don't mean to take over unnecessarily, but I'll just, if she comes back, I just don't see her now. Mr. Matelski, let me know if that changes. So I, I facilitate, I'm fine with it. So just for my, my, my understanding, Ms. Swift, is that you just, we're just discussing, this is just a discussion item. So we will be taking no action. We will still have our meeting at 4:30 for any action that is to be taken. So the board is just having a discussion at this point, asking questions, getting information and for a little bit of time, and then we'll have our 4:30 meeting. So that's my understanding. So I will just hold my remarks and comments if I'm facilitating. Mr. Matelski, have we lost the chair?
Well, I believe she may be on phone only, so I was just going to double check. I think we did lose video, but let me double check. We can.
Okay, I'm, I'm not sure how I'm on the phone and not on video. I don't know what's happening, but
And Madam Chair, if you, if you would prefer me to facilitate, just to call on people, I can, or I'll just stand back, whatever your pleasure is.
The only suggestion that I was going to make was to allow Ms. Smith to provide a status update before we start asking questions so that we understand where we are in the process and the timing, and then we can move to questions at that point.
That sounds great to me. I yield before to the chair and the director.
Ms. Smith, you have the floor.
I'm sorry, my audio is going out. Can you hear me? Okay, I couldn't hear.
Madam Chair, if you could recall, re-ask what you were requesting of Ms. Smith.
Oh, Ms. Smith, I was asking if you could provide a status update to the board and the public regarding the count and timing, just to frame our questions or comments.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair, for repeating that. Yes, we are continuing the keying of the tabulations. So the counters that were with us over the last two days completed counting the ballots last night around midnight, I believe, was the last set that were counted. We have tally sheets that we are now keying into our database and at this time. So we have about five or so, well, we probably have four or five teams of two keying the remaining tallies into our database. And that's where we are right now. It's a little, it's taking a little longer than I anticipated, I think than we all anticipated because of the thoroughness and having to go back and separate the, you know, the ballots by precincts for advanced voting, which was not, you know, done initially because we didn't, hadn't anticipated the hand count. And so today, where we are is, is not as in, you know, advances as to how, where we want it to be at this time. So we are continuing to work and keying the totals in our database, but I don't, we are not anywhere near where we thought we would be or close to where we thought we would be.
Chairwoman Smith, you're on mute if you're talking.
I am sending your request to unmute, but you are still showing as on mute.
Well, would it be, I think we lost, so Vice Chair, I have a question for
Okay, I will
Madam Chair, are you back with us?
I'm here. Can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to restate the director's explanation for my own and potentially the public and my colleagues' understanding that the count, the tally has been completed. It's just that each of the teams that was counting created documentation of that count and all of Can you still hear me?
We can.
Okay. And all of that data has to be entered into a single spreadsheet so that the count can be completed and the data provided. Is that a correct understanding?
I apologize. I'm just, can I, can I take one second? I have a question that I need to ask staff. I apologize for that.
We can go ahead and, and tee up, I see Ms. Swift has her hand raised. Can you let me know who else would like to be recognized? And we can, I'll just go ahead and start the queue for when Ms. Smith comes back on the line.
Okay, and Chairwoman Smith, I'm assuming you're, you're about to call on maybe me, because I have questions for our lawyer. Okay, so I could, I would like to tee those up while we're waiting for Ms. Smith to come back.
Okay, and I see Anthony after you. Go ahead, Ms. Swift, you have the floor.
Okay, well, again, I want to thank you for allowing this agenda item on the, on the meeting today. I think I want us, as you know, there's an opportunity for us to be, our goal is to be as transparent as we can be. And I think, you know, we probably have some work internally to do that, but I also want the public to know that, you know, that this board and this office has worked hard. Many of us know they've been up to two and three in the morning every day doing work to try to get this count as accurate as possible. And with that said, there, I think that there are some questions that I have about communication with the Secretary of State's office, what they may have told us and what we can do, because I think that, and I don't want to speak for anyone else, but I definitely think that we recognize that, you know, this issue that we are seeing appears to be an issue that has impacted several counties across the state related to redistricting. And we need to figure out the best step for moving forward. So for the legal folks on the call, first question is, have we communicated or made any requests to the Secretary of State's office, the General Counsel's office, related to certification? Whether we can certify the election results and exclude District Two? Or if we can, what happens if we don't certify the election results at all and pursue other counts?
Ms. Swift, as I understand, as a board, your goal is to ensure an accurate result for every race and to ensure what you certify is accurate. And in that regard, we did communicate with the Secretary of State about these issues. And what I can tell you is if we cannot certify because we want to be accurate, then you are between a rock and a hard place. But we understand your primary goal is accuracy. The other part of the answer to your question is statute sets our deadline at, today at five. But our primary goal is accuracy.
Okay, so to that end, if we do not certify the election results at 4:30, how does that affect the runoff that are slated? And yeah, how does that affect the runoff?
I, I don't know that it does, but I would like to answer that question in detail in more of a dialogue offline with you one-on-one and with each of your board members one-on-one. So that we can probe that more specifically. Again, that would be one-on-one offline.
Okay, so then I think I am struggling with, so, so as I understand it, what the precipice for this issue is likely redistricting that happened at the, at the state, the seat, the center for election office, which caused there to be some errors potentially on the ballots that came down to DeKalb. There, the, the Board of Elections is doing its best to have the hand recount. We do not, well, there are some concerns about other races confirming the accuracy of that. In the event we want to move forward with the hand recount of the entire election, how would that be conducted?
I'm sorry, repeat the question, Ms. Swift.
If we wanted to move forward with the hand recount of all of the races that in the election prior to certifying, what, is there a process for that to happen? And is there any guidance from the Secretary of State's office for this situation?
Can't say there's guidance from the Secretary of State's office for that situation. What I can tell you is OCGA 212495 gives a procedure for that, and we can closely look at that and address it with you if, if that is a consideration we need to research for.
Okay, is the director back on the, back yet? I don't think, I don't think she is yet. Okay. Have you, do we have any legal opinion, and I guess I am hard, I, I apologize for asking this on the spot, around the, the two options of certification, either certifying all the results, sort of not side of certifying any of the election, or certifying everything but District Two. Do we have any guidance on what would happen if we don't certify? I guess I'm still trying to understand what, is that the offline discussion or is that not, do we not, do we know what we would, what would be our next steps?
Again, your goal is to ensure an accurate result for every race and to ensure what you certify is accurate. So that would be a part of the offline discussion. And if you cannot certify on time because you are trying to ensure accuracy, then that would be a decision you guys have to make. But I understand that your primary goal is to have an accurate result that you have calculated and then an accurate result that you certify. If we do that, then we will have to look at that.
Okay. And because I want to give the other folks time. Okay, so I understand the context of where we are with current tabulation of, you're, you have thousands of pieces of paper that you're trying to finalize with all of the election results. They, but in addition to the portion that has been hand carried. Can we, can you talk at all, and lawyers can jump in, about what we think happened? And if you can't, And if you can't, I, I just want to make sure, you know.
Are you, are you asking about Commission District Two specifically?
Yeah, we did, yeah.
So we're really still getting information about the cause of the issue? So I, I can't, you know, speak to that with full confidence that I even know what, exactly what happened.
But you're, you're working through that, okay. And then, I think one more question for the lawyers, can we, I guess, again, going back to our certification issue, I guess you're researching about whether or not we would need a court order to delay our certification results?
We, we are researching those issues based on your direction in this meeting, Ms. Swift, and we will speak offline.
Okay, thank you.
And I want to be very clear when I say we, I will, we will work to call each of you individually.
Madam Chair, are you back with us?
I am, if you can hear me.
We can.
Ms. Swift, does that conclude your questions for now?
It is, it does.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Lewis, you're recognized.
Thank you, um, I was going to ask some very similar questions to Ms. Swift. So I'm going to just reiterate some of that. Can you hear me?
We can.
Okay. So I'm just going to reiterate that so that I can add an extra voice to it. I would like to know who definitely are our hands tied. Seems that in elections, you know, we keep judges basically on call throughout this process. So, and, and court orders can be obtained for a number of situations. And if we are trying to ensure accuracy and public confidence via that accuracy, we, that's something I definitely want to explore, the possibility of extending our certification period if necessary. So I was going to basically ask, ask that same question. The other thing I want to bring up is, Ms. Smith, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you now, thank you.
Did the Secretary of State offer us the opportunity to do a risk limiting audit? An RLA?
Yes, so a few weeks back, there were communications that were sent out from the Secretary of State's office, we, asking for volunteers to do risk, you know, a voluntary risk limited audit. And the CAB did respond, yes, that we would, but it is to my understanding and knowledge that we did not receive any additional instructions about that voluntary audit.
Okay, so I want to add the possibility of doing a very robust RLA for this election. Again, I think, especially when we talk about accuracy of our elections and public confidence and what we're trying to do and transparency, I think this is something that we necessarily, we, is necessary for us to look at doing. And I'm not sure, is, this might be another question for our legal team, if we need to wait on some sort of input from the Secretary of State or whether or not we decide if we want to do a, an audit on our own. So I don't know if they have set aside procedures or if we can do that on our own. Or if we can just make the decision on our own without having to go through the Secretary of State. So that's a, probably an issue for the legal staff. And again, I want to address a couple of questions that came up in, in, in public comments that I think we need clarity on. Regarding the recount, I know that there were issues regarding people taking photographs of ballots. So I would like some clarity on our, our policy around that. And just so the people will know what was going on. So can you or if necessary, a member of our legal department, explain that to us?
I would defer to the legal department for that.
Anyone there from legal?
Mr. Lewis, repeat your question again, please.
I just want us to state our policy during the recount period for observers and the press related to photographing ballots. I'm, I'm addressing a question that was brought up or an issue that was brought up during our public comment.
I understand, Mr. Lewis, as I understood the policy, what, what we explained is that the press could bring video equipment in and we asked them not to video ballots and the public and others were not allowed to bring equipment in that could report.
And what's our statutory, our legal basis for that, making that decision? And, and I'll go ahead and tell you, you know, I received emails and text messages referring to our recent decision by Judge Bule. So maybe you can address that along those lines?
I understand, Mr. Lewis, I will say that our office is aware of Judge Bule's order and aware of the law generally. And that policy is where we landed and we continue to look at that ongoing as always. But we were aware of Judge Bule's order.
Madam Chair, are you available? I believe it's back to you.
I'm sorry, I was, I was, I was muted. I, I think we're going to need a little bit more detailed answer from legal, sorry to push them on that. They're not able to do it now, I think we should probably try to have it before certification or definitely at some point. Because I think people are going to need to know not only our policy but our reasoning behind that policy. That's all I have for now, we can move on to other board members.
We'll get back to you, Mr. Lewis.
Madam Chair, are you back with us?
I am, I can hear everything, can, am I being heard now?
You are.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Mr. Lewis. Was, is the vice chair still in the queue?
I am.
Okay, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I just want to say before I ask a few questions and these probably should start, Ms. Smith, as our director, their sort of operational question, so they'll go to you and then there, there may be some legal questions, so Mr. Phillips, if you'll be on standby. And I'd like to start by saying my particular philosophy is do the people's business in front of the people, okay? So as much as we can be disclosure oriented and transparent so that the public can understand sort of the linear path that got us here, that was helpful, I need to understand that and I want the public to hear from me. I am not fully of all of the details necessary to understand exactly how we got exactly at this spot. So I'm trying to understand that along with the public as well, so, and so bear with me here. So Director Smith, so it's my understanding that we have a thing called the Election Management System and we input data into it, getting all the, getting the ballot configured, if you will. And so we submit that to the Center for Elections and they, and that's at the state, and they review all the inputs that we've done and sort of sign off on that ballot development, is, is that correct? You're muted.
I'm going to ask Tiffany, who is our Elections Manager, to answer that question, she's involved in that process.
Okay, perfect, that's great, that's great, thank you. Hi Tiffany. Thanks for joining us, so I'll just repeat the question so you, here at Dr. So we, we have this Election Management System that we input data in that goes to the Center for Elections of the state and they then look at our ballot and decide if it's how it's supposed to be, is that correct?
Yeah, what we do is we give them our ballot submissions and then they place them on the ballot in accordance to how, what we gave them. And then they also have reports, they pull a report to make sure that the districts, you know, everything is, should be lining up as to what should be on the ballot. Then once they've done that process, then that's when the proofing begins, they send everything back to us. And then we print out the ballots, we get our reports and we check the, to make sure that all of the precincts are in the correct districts, the placement on the, the placement of the races on the ballots as well as the wording of the questions, the how, you know, how many you're voting for, making sure that the candidates are in alphabetical order. Once we've finished doing our proof, then we send a sign-off sheet to CES and they send us our.
That's the center, that's CES, the Center for Elections and that's at the state, correct?
Correct, mm-hmm. And then once we do that, we send our, send the sign-off sheet and then we're done.
Okay, and then, and then do they send back, okay, that's fine, and is that when we conduct the logic and accuracy testing?
They don't send anything back that is fine, once we send something, then they'll let us know when our database or our election project will be complete and when it'll be available.
So the election project is essentially the program that we then put on the machines, is that correct? Okay, so we send it back to them and then they let us know when the programs that they develop, that then we take and we put on all of our ballot marking devices and we put, we program our scanners to read that, is that correct?
Correct, mm-hmm.
Okay, so then we get this program back from the state, we put it on these devices, these electronic devices and then, then we do logic and accuracy testing, is that correct? Okay, so we conducted logic and accuracy testing according to our notice, that's a public procedure, or the public is, has access to that, they can come and watch us do that. We conducted those tests for advanced in-person voting machines and scanners on the 11th of April, the Election Day machines on the 15th of April and the absentee ballot processing machines, I suppose, on the 18th of April according to the notice that we posted on our website and in the champion. So we, we did those tests and they produced a result sufficient to, we liked, we liked those results that passed that test essentially, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so then, so just bear with me, this is just my linear understanding of the process, so then at some point early advanced voting, I know that one Republican question was not on the, was not on the ballot properly, it was missing a question, right? Okay, so we went back to the state and said, we got to fix this, right?
Correct.
And so then they issued a new program.
No, no.
A new program, no, okay, so how did they fix that?
So what happened, we spoke with CES and let them know that the question was not displaying on the touchscreens. And then we will walk through a process of how to get that to, to load on the touchscreens. So, but it was never a new database, we're still working from the same database.
Okay, so, but we did something to the machines at that point?
Yes, you would have to go back and load the machines, correct, to make sure that the question displays.
Okay, and so that, we would do that for all of the machines in advanced elect, and Election Day machines? We did that procedure, we touched all of the machines to make this adjustment.
Correct.
Did we do subsequent logic and accuracy testing after we unsealed the machines that had been previously, like say the Election Day machines were not in use at that time, only the advanced in-person, but we went and unsealed those Election Day machines that had been sealed up after logic and accuracy testing? And then we, we made the, the required change to have this show, did we test again?
As far as I know, the, the machines that we had already been LNA'd were retested.
So we have a second LNA test?
We should, yes.
We should, okay. So, and I, for the record, for the public and, and I'll reiterate this, I can recent the email, I've asked for our LNA test results to be provided, so I'd like to see that at some point. So we retested and then resealed everything, uh, ready for Election Day, then comes Election Day. And, okay, so did the scanners also get updated with any kind of programmatic for reading or any kind of project? Was there any kind of update to the scanners?
To the ICCs?
I don't know.
To the central scanners? The ones that read the, the ones that read the, no, because those were not affected. Though that was, what was happening was a display of the BMDs, our ballots, our absentee ballots were correct. We were never, and we were never advised to go back and LNA our ICCs.
Okay, not talking about our, okay, thank you, I'm not talking about our absentees, but like for the scanners that read the paper ballots that come out after the voter uses the ballot marking device.
Were they re-LNA?
Yes.
I'm, I would have to ask, do, I would have to do a follow-up, but I'm almost certain that they were, but I will follow up with that.
Okay, and so they were also, they also had to be touched subsequent to the first LNA test, they were, had to be adjusted to read the, the the new, the, the ballot and, and we've LNA tested those a second time as well.
Definitely, we should have and I will follow up to make sure that was done.
Okay, because that's going to be important. Did we notice properly that second LNA testing? Because I know we have to give notice for that and I know we had some issues with putting our first LNA test notice on our website, it was noticed in the champion, but it was put up on our website late, unfortunately. It was put up on May 6th, even though, on our website, even though the testing had already been done in April. I'm assuming that, and I, I believe that we got it in the champion timely. The second of LNA testing that we did was in the champion and, and also put on our website?
No, because we were still in LNA and it was, we're still LNAing and we didn't change our database. We're still working in the same database and we're still LNAing for the same election.
So, but, but we would have done a separate LNA test apart from what we did on the 11th, the 15th and the 18th and we would have wanted to give notice, I would think, so we're, we don't, the notice for an additional test, we don't know about.
No, I, no, because we were still in LNA, we were still LNAing for the same election.
Okay, well, I, I'm not sure that I'm in agreement with how the linear process there, but we'll just keep going down, okay. So then after this second test, then that, the machines were then sealed for the Election Day and, and then we went on with that process, right?
Correct.
Okay, so.
But let me say, I want to check on what all was actually done. If they had to go and put the question back onto the touchscreens, I'm sure that a LNA was done to make sure that that question was, that it did display.
Okay, and so in the process, when we were looking at this, specific to this District Two race, and I know we had the, sort of the strange defect of, we had originally four candidates and then one withdrew. And so, and we have sort of two sets of, two sets of ballot or two sets of machine for this district too, we have five of them, I think, or whatever that were in this, they, they were messed because of the, the state didn't get them in the right district or something, so we had some precincts that should be in District Two and so they had a different set of machines that, to fix that. So we had some precincts that should be in district two. And so they had a different, um, set of machines that, to fix that problem. Is that correct?
Well, from what I understand is that we did not get the correct, uh, district maps for redistricting. So they were not in the correct place then, yes.
Okay.
But it wasn't that the database was messed up due, or you know, that it was created because of that.
Okay. When did that defect, the redistricting problem get corrected in the elections process?
Uh, May the 1st, the day before advanced voting.
Okay. So it, we got that fixed in advance of people doing their advancement. Okay. So that's good. And, um, and then everybody else that was already in the district and that was voting. So were, were those the cases, were the precincts that had, where we had the zero vote anomaly for a candidate? Were those in the, not in the messed up redistrict, but in the regular, um, precincts that were not messed up to begin with, that we had?
They were in, they were in database one, the original.
Original database one, that's where we had those zero problems?
Yes.
Okay. So that was the majority of the precincts?
Correct.
Okay. And then, so the smaller group, um, that had that little redistricting glitch, we didn't see the zeros, but we may or may not have seen anomalous numbers there. We don't know. We're proceeding to find out.
Correct. But that's what we're finding, we're seeing to find out.
Okay. And then the group that we had the zeros, which was the most, which was the majority of them, were also, obviously we're doing this recount. And we'll find out what the real tabs are in those. And have we learned, um, specifically why we saw that null value, that zero value for one of the three active candidates? What happened specifically in that project that caused that zero total that is unlikely to be the case?
So from what I understand, there were some precincts where four candidates were displaying on the, um, touchscreens. And there were some precincts where three candidates were displaying on the touchscreen. So, but we were never told to reprogram our, uh, complex, compact flashcards for the ICPs, which are the scanners. So those stayed the same. We were never, but it was asked, did we need to redo those? And we were told, no. So when you had the ones, when you had the precincts, they had the four. And then they had the four on the screen. When the tape displayed, those lined up. So everybody was able to get a vote. But if you had on your ICPs, you still had four candidates. And then on your touchscreens, you had three. That's where the discrepancy would come in with, I guess, the alignment of how the, um, votes were distributed.
Okay. And do you know the source of why some ballot marking devices displayed three and some displayed four? Do we know?
No, we don't know. Because the only time that a jump drive was, was put into all of the, um, the touchscreens was to update the question. So everybody.
The Republican question.
Correct. Correct. So everyone, well, all of the, you know, BMDs were updated for that. So everybody had the Republican question. So I'm, I'm assuming that everything should have matched up and went in at the same time, because that was the only time there was a jump drive inserted to do an update to the touchscreens.
Okay. And after that jump drive, as we previously discussed, there was LNA testing.
Say it again?
Jump drive in and updated the BMDs with that, we did LNA testing.
Yes. But I'm unsure. I do, like I said, I do want to see what happened in the warehouse, but they, they were supposed to do LNA testing.
Okay. And just for the lawyer, I'm just saying this, I don't need Mr. Phillips, and I'll reiterate it in email. I'd like to see, uh, and, and, um, I'd like to see our notice for that LNA testing. And I'd like to, um, see the results of both sets of LNA testing. And then, so, um, my understanding, Tiffany, I think what, one of the things you shared with us earlier was then we were not, um, given instructions to also reprogram those scanners. Those did not get.
Reprogram the, uh-huh, the flash card, the compact flash cards that are inserted in them. Yes.
Into the scanners. So those remain the same as, as, um, they were the very, prior to us updating with these jump drives for the Republican question on all these machines.
Yes, but that, the, the question and then the program of the cards were two separate situations.
Right.
So on the first day of advanced voting, there was an issue with the, the, um, the prop, the, um, question displaying on the screen. The next day, we were getting calls from the advanced voting locations that certain precincts ballots were not scanning into the scanners. So then we, we proceeded to make a call to see what that could have been. And then we had a technician come out, um, still within the same database. And, um, we updated some, we updated the cards, the flash cards for the, um, ICPs. We took out new scanners to all of the advanced voting locations and that solved the problem.
Okay. So, um, and I, this has all been very, um, um, thank you for talking me through this linear process. I hope it's been useful to my colleagues and also to the public. This is a dialogue that we haven't had as a board yet and that we haven't, um, that, you know, I, I have some questions about in emails, but I've been, you know, working through it. I know this, and I would say the staff's been, you know, all hands on deck. And everybody's been busy and they can't just drop everything and answer all of my detailed questions, you know, instantly. So I appreciate this opportunity to dialogue with you. Um, I'll just end with this. So all along this linear process with, um, putting in data here, you know, a jump up here to these machines and, but not looking at the scanners. And I, and this is the, the, the context too, is that this is what we're being told to do from the people that develop these projects, these programs that comes from the state. And all along, we're being told what to do and what not to do, what needs to be looked at, what doesn't need to be looked at. My concern, when asked as a board member, when asked to certify this election, um, as a, in, in total, not just the district two election that we're doing a hand count on. So eventually I'm thinking, I feel confident about the district two election for Board of Commissioners, because we're doing this hand count. I don't know, is the unknown unknowns that are potentially involved in any other race, maybe much more subtly, much more difficult to understand. Um, I don't, I don't have a good feeling for that. I don't have these LNA tests. I don't have the notice for those sorts of secondary LNA tests that we were doing. I don't have the information. So I feel, um, like I don't have a, either on which to certify the race in total. That's where I am right now, given that we've had all these touchpoints into the programming. And, you know, sort of best practice for program development or, you know, you develop over here in your, you know, this database. You, you develop, you test and you get everything all like you want before you put it into production. And then once you do that, that's sort of, you know, that's sealed off and you, you don't touch that again. And I feel like we were touching that in the middle of things without all of the proper development procedures to guarantee fidelity to integrity to all of the questions and, and all of the, uh, tabulation methodologies and so on. So that's where I am. Um, I just put that out there for my colleagues and the public, so everyone can understand with clarity, the issues that I'm struggling with. Um, so with that, I will yield back the floor to the Department has their hand back.
Ms., Ms. Jester, if I may, uh, I just want to announce that the chair is having trouble being on the video and has called and asked if she could be recognized. So.
Okay. Yeah. So, and so I yield, I, I yield the floor and I, um, uh, yield the floor back to the chair. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Madam Chair, very good.
Okay. Thank you. Um, I'm having some very frustrating, um, connection issues with both my phone and laptop. So my sincere apologies. I am listening and following the meeting. Um, I did want to, um, state, and I was trying to do this, um, in the midst of the vice chairs questioning just for clarity purposes, that some of the questions that are being asked, um, is a part of the timeline that we have been actively working to reconstruct since election day. And so our understanding of the various steps and inputs involved is not complete, um, at this moment. And I, um, I guess since, you know, since I'm speaking to this, I'll just go ahead and say, that I recognize that there has been, um, an unfortunate, uh, perception of a lack of transparency. Um, and I want to assure the public, um, that there is not any attempt by this board to withhold information or to not be transparent. We have been actively seeking to create a fuller picture so that we can share that accurately, um, when we make statements. And it became clear to us that, um, we had not been in receipt of a complete understanding, um, of how we got here. And we did not want to prematurely put on the record, um, anything that we could not be confident in. So I, I just wanted to use that to frame, um, our understanding, uh, and provide context for where we are, uh, right now in this process. I also want to acknowledge that we did add this agenda item at the last minute. I had people asking me prior to the meeting, um, if we were going to discuss them, discuss this. And I assured them that we were not because it was not on the agenda. I don't know if any of those people are in the meeting. And, um, I would hate for them to miss out on extremely detailed discussion simply because they were not advised that this was going to be part of our conversation today. So what I would request is that, um, any remaining board members who would like to speak, if we could just keep it at high level questions at this point.
Sorry.
Uh, if we could keep it at a high level, please, and, um, give the, uh, director and staff the opportunity to return with any answers if they're able to achieve them when we, um, resume or when we, uh, call to order our 4:30 special call meeting to discuss certification. Um, so since I cannot see any, any images, um, is there, uh, I think Ms. Modder is the only one who has not yet been recognized.
That's right, Madam Chair. I'm next.
Okay. All right. You have the floor, Ms. Modder.
Thank you. Um, I guess I'll just start out with a general comment. It has been a whirlwind, uh, since election day on the 24th. There's been a lot of fact-finding, a lot of phone calls involving VRE, um, the Board of Elections, our chair with, uh, Secretary of State's office, the state, CES, lawyers, uh, county lawyers, SOS lawyers, a lot of people involved. And I can say at this point, uh, we are truly still forensically trying to chase down the timeline that the chair just mentioned, um, because there are a lot of moving parts. And not only our VRE staff, but, you know, there's other third parties involved. Secretary of State's office, uh, CES and others. And so when you're trying to build an accurate timeline as to the events that occurred, um, we need to pull in information from all of the participants in that timeline. So we don't have a complete timeline at this point. So I can confidently say, I don't know what I don't know at this point. And I know at some point in the very near future, I'll have a lot more information. I will also say, having, um, been down at VRE over the weekend, Saturday and Sunday, and having had the opportunity, because I just was merely in the war room at the time, I did have an opportunity to sit in on a call, uh, which involved, uh, the, uh, lead at CES. And I can tell you folks that, um, hearing the explanation as to how everything works, it really took the third explanation from the gentleman before it really clicked in for me. So we are dealing with some, um, challenging, uh, technical issues in addition to people issues and timeline issues. So I'll, I'll leave that there. Um, I guess a comment that I will like to make and a request, and I think it's really for our lawyers as well as our director, going forward, no matter how this vote goes at 4:30, my request is anytime we are speaking with the Secretary or State, the state CES, I want something in writing. I want documentation. A lot of conversations have been verbal and I want an audit trail. I want to know who said what and when. It could be in a memorialization email. I, I want something that we all can refer to, um, going forward, regardless of how this vote goes, if we're going to have a recount, uh, a risk-limiting audit, whatever we wanna call it, whatever is being required of us by the state, that we have something in writing from the appropriate parties that we are to, we are to X, Y and Z in terms of process. So I, I think that will be very helpful. Um, I, I acknowledge the, the swiftness of the events and the, um, discussions that were necessary to be made over the weekend. And, um, sometimes that is a phone call. Sometimes that's the only way you can reach people and get an answer very quickly. But I think it behooves us at this point to be more deliberative about our documentation process so that we have an audit trail to not only protect ourselves here at the VRE, but it also protects all the other parties involved in the mini-conversation. So, um, Ms. Swift, uh, asked my questions regarding, um, uh, some of the legal proceedings, some of the legal views on if we certified in whole or in part, or if we didn't certify. And so I don't have any additional questions for our lawyers and I'll turn it back over to you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Modder. Uh, I understand that, um, Ms. Swift has her, uh, is asking to be recognized.
Okay. Thank you, Chair. I did have an, another question or a couple of questions for, um, the, for Executive Director Smith. And again, I don't wanna get into the weeds of what, of the timeline yet because we're not there. But I just wanna clarify with the redistricting that the state conducted. We were, we received those back. They weren't correct. Is that accurate?
The maps that we received from reapportionment were after, um, we had our, you know, we completed our, uh, process here in the office. And so that was the issue there.
Okay. And then the issue or that before early voting, when we real, when we determined that there was, um, an issue with the precincts as a result of reapportionment and redistricting. When do we have a sense of if that cause was part of the reason why there were? The person that was removed, so when Broussard wasn't removed in April from the ballots that we had put together and sent to the state, we had accurately removed that, the, the fourth candidate in district two. But we, but is it possible that when the state sent the, updated it for the reapportionment, they did not remove Broussard from the ballots? Is that possibly what has happened here? And I know you don't know that because you're, we're still trying to figure it out. But, um, you know, I think the public has, wanna make sure the public understands that there are a lot of, we, we don't, we don't have the state's audit trail. Um, and so we're gonna have to push them to make sure they have procedures and, and also are auditing their processes, as well as, as we do the same thing. But it, I think there's a big question of how the candidate ended up on some ballots and, and not others. And it seems that part of that has to do with the errors that we receive when we receive the reapportion maps and the precincts and the changes that had to be done. So I'm just trying to, if you can talk through that at all, I know that, that is a hard question. But we just wanna clarify that, like, there's a lot of potential mis. of potential misstep that happened. And and we are trying to get to the bottom of that while also trying to make sure that we have the accurate election results.
Right. Thank you. I don't and yes, we're I'm trying to get to the bottom of it as well. And I don't think that those two situations were or issues were related. I think they were separate as far as I can tell, but I don't, you know, have the answer as to whether we've been operating on, you know, been isolation, you know, this was an isolated issue, that was an isolated issue. Whether technically, you know, behind the scenes, the developer of the programs, you know, did something where it affected the one affected the other or not, I don't know what I don't know if that's the case.
I don't have any more questions at this time.
And Madam Vice Chair, just so you're aware, it appears that Ms. Lomond Smith is actually not on at the moment, but she is trying to get back in. There she is. Let's see if and I do see Mr. Phillips has his hand raised as well, but trying now, Madam Chair.
Yes, I'm I'm here. I missed the last comments with apologies. Mr. Phillips, did you want to be recognized?
Yes, Madam Chair. I thought that the comments had been completed and I had some comments to offer as this board prepares for 4:30 is now a time that's appropriate for me to do that.
I I think so. I'll save my my comments for after that.
Thanks for your indulgence, Madam Chair. I I have a couple of points that I want to make sure are clear. Your goal is to ensure the accuracy of the results. You've heard me say it. Your goal is to ensure that what you certify is accurate. And you've asked the direct question about your options and I want to respond to that. You really have three options, as I see it. You can certify the election results. You can decide to delay certification. Or you could decide to certify results with the exception of District Two or some other race. And this may cause an issue with the Elections Board. But I want to be clear, accuracy is paramount importance. And your delay may be justified if it's to ensure that the count is complete and accurate before you certify. I don't see authority in the law right now for a court order to delay certification at this juncture. And I want to speak to one other issue. Mr. Lewis asked some direct questions about our photo policy. And I want to be clear about my answer and guidance to you. Judge Boulay's order is not applicable to this situation. But rest assured, we're continuing to review and take a hard look at our photo rules going forward so as to maintain the good order and integrity of this process and to protect voters' ballots. And I hope those comments will help you as you all prepare for some very difficult decisions you have to make at 4:30. And as you look to hear from your staff if they've completed counting and tabulating and have results for you to consider for certification. And thanks for your indulgence, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Phillips. Last, let's do a last wrap up here and and then we can conclude. Ms. Swift, did you have another question?
I did. So thank it's actually to Mr. Phillips. So thank you for those three options. Is there any way, and I again, this is, I know you you guys are working specific to the delay option and the the certify with the exception of District Two? What I I just and maybe this is a staff question or what are the logistics from going forward from there? So if we delay certification, can we then vote for a recount? Do we do we can you will you be able to give us some guidance on like the next steps by 4:30? I know I know it's a lot to ask right now. Or will we make the decision and then you'd be able to give us some guidance on what our options are?
As you know, Ms. Swift and Board, we're continuing to work and we will endeavor to do all of what you ask. Okay?
Thank you. I'm sorry, there was one more question about the absentee ballots. Well, this, I guess this is a question for the Director if she if you could just maybe have an answer for how absentee ballots would be handled if we do delay certification for the runoff, I guess. I know you might not have the answer now, but
Would it could you elaborate a little?
If we delay the certification of the results, will that impact the production of absentee ballots or the runoffs since we only have a four week period for the runoff anyway? Or I just think just trying to understand the process. So I know you don't have the answer now, but I think we need to understand that at 4:30.
I'll have yeah, I'll research that. Thank you.
I think we've lost the Chair again, but she's trying to come back. So I'll give her a second to do that. Mr. Matelski, did
She is trying to connect but has no audio or video at the moment.
Okay, I know she wanted to make a statement. I believe her comments she was holding until after Mr. Phillips spoke. So let's just give her just a second to come back so that we can hear her comments, I think. So any does anyone else at this time have any other comments? Thoughts? I'm not seeing any. Mr. Matelski, do we see that she's back or or no?
Actually, no, she was there but with no audio and video and now she has disappeared once again.
Here again, okay. I I don't have our agenda in front of me. I do think this concludes pretty much our agenda. What if anyone can indulge me? What is next on our agenda? I just don't have a paper in front of me.
Madam Chair or Vice Chair, it appears to be board comments and then adjournments.
And then adjournment. Okay, that's where I thought. Okay. I will just go ahead and go to board comments. And if the Chair joins us again, she can make her comment in board comments. I will go ahead and recognize my colleagues here. I'll start with Mr. Lewis. Do you have a comment at this time?
Yes, thank you, Madam Vice Chair. I just want to end by saying thank you to the staff for this weekend. It was a holiday weekend and a lot of people were there Saturday, Sunday, and Monday working late hours to help get through this recount. So I really appreciate what they did. They showed a lot of dedication. So I want to definitely send a thank you out to them. Also, we had a lot of volunteers that had to come in for adjudication and ballot duplication. Thanks again to all of them for their hard work. They are performing an invaluable service to this county. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ms. Mottner. Do you have comments at this time?
I'd just like to echo Mr. Lewis's comments and any other comments I'll reserve for our second meeting. So thank you, Vice Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Mottner. Ms. Swift?
Echoing all the comments from the Board and I I want to also thank our community, our public for their, you know, advocacy and interest and also but at the same time, I want to be clear about this office and the 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 staff here that they are working hard. And there should be no assumption that anyone has acted in bad faith or negligently, that they have consistently followed the the processes as they've been outlined by the Secretary of State and taken that direction. And so as we work to ensure, you know, that this is an accurate election, I also want us to be clear that everyone here is working to 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 that goal and to that end. So thank you, everyone.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Swift. I believe our Chair has a comment to make of the audio. I don't think she will be on video. So at this time, I recognize the Chair for her comments.
Madam Chair, you're breaking up. Do you want to try again, please? Unfortunately, it sounds like you're underwater. Yeah, my apologies, Madam Chair. We did not get a single word of that.
Yeah, I'm I'm sorry, Chair. I really would prefer to hear your comments, but perhaps we can hear them at our next meeting at 4:30. I will echo every I will echo everyone's comments. I appreciate the work of staff. I know this is our new Executive Director's first election and I know that she's been taking lots of notes. And I appreciate her time. I appreciate all of the the time the staff has put in. I know that this has been exhausting over this holiday weekend. So thank you from from me and from I know I speak for the whole board and thanking you for all the efforts that you have put in. So with that, we have a separate meeting that we will convene at 4:30. So to the public, please join us then. At this point in time, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Okay, it has been moved by Mr. Lewis. I saw his hand up. Is there
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
It is we have a motion to adjourn properly seconded by Ms. Mottner. All in favor, please raise your right hand and say aye.
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 That is unanimous and we are oh, and the Chair as well. Thank you. We are adjourned. Thank you.